Greetings and welcome to the Saco City Council meeting for Monday, July 11, 2022. Let the call to order be at 6:30 PM. Let the record reflect that all councilors are present, with the exception of Councilor Archer, who's been excused, and I'd like to invite you all to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
Thank you very much. There's no items under General this evening. Brings us to item five, Committee Correspondence to Council. Any committee correspondents at this time? Seeing no hands raised, no committee correspondence. This time, I'd like to move on to item six, Public Comment. One person signed up for public comment, Kevin LaFortune. Please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and please present to the City Council. The minutes is three. Time limit.
I'll be well under that.
Okay.
Good evening. Kevin LaFortune, 6 P. Body Lane, Ward Four. I'm also on the school board, and I currently serve as the chair. I'm speaking tonight on an item under New Business regarding a proposed charter amendment change to the role of the mayor and the school board. The council has powers to propose amendments to the charter. That's not the issue. The problem is how this proposal appeared. I learned about this in the middle of this afternoon from a couple of community members that just happened to look at the council packet. There was no notice to the school board that it was going to be considered, including at the joint meeting that we had two weeks ago in this room. It was just quietly slipped in to a council agenda in the middle of the summer on a week when the superintendent was traveling. You can attempt to frame it however you want, but that is how it looks. Whether it moves forward tonight is really irrelevant. The manner in which it appeared is all anybody's going to remember. Optics aside, I really honestly do not see how Saco gains from the proposed change. The commentary included in the packet mentions oversight. If this change is for oversight, what is the purpose of the school board? All it seems to accomplish is to introduce politics into a historically apolitical board. That is not a good move moving forward, and I just honestly wish that there had been more notice to this because I think we could have avoided all of the ramifications of my speaking about this this evening, as well as any, you know, difficulty that people are going to have moving past this when it comes to future joint meetings with the school board. Thank you.
Thank you. If there's anyone else, anyone else signed up? If there's anyone else who would like to speak, please come forward and be heard.
Good evening. I'm going to adjust this for short people and try not to be too loud. My name's Jennifer Preble. I live at 236 Jenkins Road in Saco. I am also a school board member. I also am referring to the last piece that Mr. LaFortune just spoke about. I just wanted to bring up some concerns. First of all, my first question is, we had a council meeting and school board meeting joint two weeks ago on the 27th. Why was the new amendment not mentioned during the joint meeting in order to seek the input from the school board? Just wondering about that. So I did read everything on the packet and kind of had some questions or thoughts. One of my concerns is having the mayor assume, a mayor assume the role of the Saco School Chair Board with both the board and the superintendent puts them both at risk. If the current or future mayor have a certain opinion of a current or future superintendent, it could put the board relationship with the superintendent at risk as per policy BDD Board Superintendent Relationship and policy BCB Board Member of Conflict of Interest. Having any future mayor be chair of the board essentially puts them a board member, becoming a board member potentially, thus putting a potential conflict of interest. Board policy BDA Board Organizational Meeting dictates that the school board voted by the public appoints their chair and vice chair yearly. By appointing someone as a potential CEO of the board as in a mayor position, essentially makes them a part of the board. The school, not, sorry, not school. The voters vote in the school boards all separately. By putting someone in a dual role takes away from the voter's right to have board members present to be the, basically, our chair we appoint by the elected officials, and by taking away that and appointing it to a mayor of the city of Saco, you're taking away the voter's right to have a unaffiliated with the city vote on the chair. So, the other question I had is, why are we making also a politically neutral board now political? Thank you.
Thank you. If there's anyone else who would like to speak to the City Council, please come forward and be heard. Seeing nobody seeking recognition, moving on from public comment to item seven, Approval of the Minutes for June 27, 2022. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Counselor Hatch, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor McPhail. Thank you. Any discussion? Roll call vote on the minutes? Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero. That brings us to item eight, Consent Items. There are two items on the consent agenda. Item A, the certification of the election results for June 14, 2022, State Primary Budget Validation Referendum and Special Referendum Election. And then, item B, an annual report extension. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Counselor McPhail, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Hatch. Any discussion on the consent items? Seeing no discussion. Roll call vote, excuse me. Roll call vote on consent items. Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero. Brings us to item nine, Action Items. We have multiple items. Item A is a public hearing, Amendments to Section 7.1 of Saco Zoning Ordinance for Accessory Dwelling Units on Page Seven in your packet and assigned to Counselor Purdy. Counselor Purdy.
Thank you. Saco Code Enforcement Office and Fire Department staff proposed to amend the performance standards for accessory dwelling units of Section 7.1 of Saco zoning ordinance. These standards currently require provision of fire sprinklers and new attached ADUs. However, the State Fire Marshal requires fire sprinkler systems to be also, also be provided in the existing residence where such ADUs are constructed. Staff finds this all or nothing fire sprinkler requirement significantly increases the cost to construct an attached ADU, which conflicts with the city's goals of encouraging infill development and provision of housing that meets the needs of a variety of Saco residents. This amendment would revise Saco standards by eliminating the sprinkler requirement for new ADUs proposed to be attached to or constructed within existing residence that do not contain fire sprinklers. Other amendments include addition of a clearer and broader purpose statement that is tied to the comprehensive plan and provision of design guidelines for detached ADUs. Saco's planning board voted six zero during the March 15, 2022 meeting to forward a positive recommendation to City Council for the proposed amendments. I move to open the public hearing.
Motion's been made by Counselor Purdy to open the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Berman. Any discussion on opening the public hearing? Roll call to open the public hearing. Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero to open the public hearing at 6:39. The public hearing is now open. Anyone wishing to speak on this item, please come forward and be heard. Seeing nobody seeking recognition, Counselor Purdy?
I move to close the public hearing and schedule the final reading for July 25, 2022.
Motion's been made by Counselor Purdy. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Johnston. Any discussion on closing the public hearing? Set final reading. Seeing no discussion, roll call vote. Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero at 6:40. Bring this to item B, a Public Hearing Contract Zone Agreement Revision for 66 North Street, Page 10 in your packet, assigned to Counselor Purdy.
Adam and Deborah Miller, owners of Curl Boutique LLC, purchased the property located at 66 North Street to operate a swoon, sorry, salon with accessory office space on the first two floors and reside on the third floor, which is presently unfinished. The property was previously the site of Carriage House Salon, a day spa business which was authorized as a personal services establishment at the subject property via a 2004 contract zone agreement between the city of Saco and the previous owners, Russell and Linda Tabo. The 2004 CZA required a provision of 14 parking spaces on the premises, one space per 200 feet of salon business use, signage limited to four square feet in area, exterior lighting limited to existing plus one additional fixture, limits on hours of operation, nine to five Mondays, nine to seven Tuesdays through Fridays, and nine to four on Saturdays, limits on number of employees to no more than six, limits on customers to no more than six per two-hour period, parking agreement allowing customers of the business at the neighboring property to use the parking lot when the applicant's business is not open. Section 2.1 of the 2004 CZA specifies that the agreement is not transferable. Mr. and Mrs. Miller therefore request an amendment to the previous agreement to authorize continuation of the salon use of the property under their ownership. The Millers propose minor changes to the configuration and uses of the property. According to the application, they intend to reduce the size of the first floor salon space from 2,758 to 2,256.75 square feet, utilize 501.25 square feet of the finished second floor as personal and office space, renovate the unfinished third floor for use as resident, install signage on an existing post and on the face of the carriage barn. No exterior changes to the site or building or changes to the conditions of approval of the CZA are proposed except for deletion of terms 2G and 2K. 2G required the parking lot agreement with the neighboring business, the Victorian Tea Room, which is no longer in operation. 2K required site plan approval by the planning board. Since no changes to the use or development of the property are proposed, staff find site plan review by the planning board is not warranted at this time. The planning board held a public hearing and voted five zero to forward a positive recommendation to City Council at the June 28, 22 meeting, planning board meeting. I move to open the public hearing.
Motion's been made by Counselor Purdy to open the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Johnston. Any discussion on opening the public hearing? Seeing no discussion, a roll call vote to open the public hearing. Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero to open the public hearing at 6:43. Any member of the public wishing to speak on this item, Contract Zone Agreement Revision for 66 North Street, please come forward and be heard. Seeing nobody coming forward, Counselor Purdy?
I move to close the public hearing and set the final reading for July 25, 2022.
Motion's been made to close the public hearing and set final reading by Counselor Purdy. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Johnston. Any discussion?
Seeing no discussion, a roll call vote. Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero to close the public hearing and set final reading for July 25. That brings us to item C, a Public Hearing Renewal Applications for Special Entertainment Permit for Run-of-the-Mill, Page 15 in your packet, and that is assigned to Counselor Johnston.
Thank you. Island Brewing Doing Business AS, the run-of-the-mill, has applied for renewal of the special entertainment permit. Governor Mills, on March 17, 2021, signed new legislation to extend the liquor license period by 90 days effective of renewal starting on March 18, 2021. This 90-day extension is based on the forced closure of in-person dining from March 18, 2020 through June 16, 2020. The applicant's liquor license expiration date was extended last year to October 8, 2022. Special entertainment permit will conclude the 90-day extension and be concurrent with the establishment's upcoming liquor license renewal, which will expire on October 8, 2023. The applicant has paid all applicable permit fees, and the clerk has properly advertised the public hearing in accordance with the Saco City Code, Chapter 93, Entertainment 93-2. I move to open the public hearing.
Motion's been made by Counselor Johnston to open the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor McPhail. Any discussion on opening the public hearing? Roll call vote to open the public hearing. Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero at 6:45. Any member of the public wishing to speak on the renewal special entertainment permit for run-of-the-mill, please come forward and be heard. Seeing nobody coming forward, Counselor Johnston.
I move to close the public hearing. Be it ordered that the City Council grant the renewal application submitted by Island Brewing Doing Business AS, the run-of-the-mill for a special entertainment permit from July 11, 2022 through October 8, 2023. I move to approve the order.
Motion's been made by Counselor Johnston. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Hatch. Any discussion? Roll call vote. Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero. That brings us to item D, a Final Reading of Chapter 168 Updates, Page 18 in your packet, assigned to Counselor Berman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council updated Chapter 168 during a final reading on December 13, 2021, adding multiple amendments on the floor. The Code's department, along with City Solicitor Tim Murphy, have noted a few minor items that were not captured in December. From Attorney Tim Murphy, it is our view that these edits accurately reflect the intentions invoked of the Saco Council from an earlier meeting. The requested changes were sought by Counselor Berman. However, they were not put into the text, even though the intentions asked them was expressed and were voted upon. As you may know, the city's official codekeeper cannot rely upon intentions, nor can they add their own omitted verbiage or changes that were not made at the hearing via strikes and additions. In short, the only way to properly capture into the code the amendments the council wanted is to re-adopt them. The city of Saco hereby ordains and approves the second and final reading of the Chapter 168 updates.
Thank you. Counselor Berman, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Hatch. Any discussion on the Chapter 168 updates? Final reading. No discussion. Roll call vote. Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero. That brings us to item E, a Final Reading, Petition for Zoning Map Amendment to Rezone Four Woodman Ave from Portland Road Zone to Medium Density Residential, MDR Zone, Page 20 in your packet, assigned to Counselor Purdy.
By petition, Patrick and Veronica Labby request the city consider amending the zoning map to rezone Four Woodman Ave, Map 35, Lot 16, Sub Lot 1, from the Portland Road Zone to the Medium Density Residential Zone. The subject property abuts an MDR district. The planning board voted seven zero to forward a positive recommendation to City Council during their April 26 meeting. As discussed during the May 16 council meeting, two other Woodman Ave parcels are similarly residential in character and in the PR zoning district. City Council is authorized to amend the zoning map in accordance with city policies and may include these properties in this amendment if appropriate. Staff confirmed that the Caldwell's owners of nine Woodman Ave, Map 35, Lot 23, do not have any issues with the potential rezone of the property. Several attempts to contact the attenders, owners of 13 Woodman Ave, Map 35, Lot 21, Sub Lot 1, have not yielded a response. I move to approve the final reading and adopt the petition for zoning map amendment, rezone Four Woodman Ave from Portland Road Zone to Medium Density Residential Zone.
Motion's been made by Counselor Purdy. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Johnston. Any discussion on the zoning map amendment? Counselor Johnston?
Thank you. So several meetings ago, we had some discussion on the possibility of including several of the lots. I know it says in the memo here that at least one property owner was agreeable to that. It looks like 13 Woodman didn't respond, and I had suggested we include 11 Ross as it's bisected in between two zones, and it was something we missed during the ZOR process, and really it's inappropriate to have a lot in one parcel, have two zoning ordinances. So I think I would move to amend the motion to include nine and 13 Woodman Ave and 11 Ross Road into the MDR zone.
Counselor Johnston has made a motion to amend to add in, what, excuse me, nine and 11 Woodman Ave and also, did you say 11 Ross Road?
13 Woodman and 11 Ross Road.
Thank you. Nine and 13 Woodman and 11 Ross Road. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor McPhail. Any discussion on the motion to amend to add in these other parcels? Seeing no discussion on the motion or the amendment, a roll call vote. Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman? Councilor Berman?
Yes.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Councilor McPhail?
Yes.
Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Amendment passes 6-0. Back to the main motion now as amended. Any discussion on the main motion as amended? Roll call vote. Councilor Purdy?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Berman?
Yes.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Councilor McPhail?
Yes.
Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0 as amended. That brings us to Item E, a first reading, budget amendment number one, Buxton Road Sewer Force Main Project, page 21 in your packet, assigned to Councilor McPhail.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city currently owns and maintains a force main along Buxton Road that runs under the main turnpike. With the work required for the main turnpikes project, this force main will need to be approximately case to handle the weight and impact of additional cars driving over it. Today, the cost estimate is $250,000, but please keep in mind that costs for labor and materials are increasing daily. Be it ordered that the city council approves the first reading of budget amendment number one fiscal year 2023 and moves to schedule a second and final reading for July 25th, 2022. I move to approve the order.
Motion's been made by Councilor McPhail. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Hatch. Any discussion on the budget amendment? Seeing no discussion, roll call vote on the budget amendment first reading. Councilor Purdy?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Berman?
Yes.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Councilor McPhail?
Yes.
Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Passes 6-0. That brings us to Item G, a one reading confirmation of Kate Kern as the city assessor. City Administrator Canrath?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Very pleased to appoint Kate Kern as our city assessor, and I hope this council will confirm that appointment. For those of you who may not know Kate, and there's probably not many in this room, but she's been with the city for 22 years, serving a variety of roles, including executive assistant to the city administrator, as well as deputy assessor since 2015. She's also a certified main assessor, knows the ins and outs of our department well, and Kate also has a bachelor's degree from USM, and also has done some graduate work at the Muskee School of Public Service. So very happy to have her, a highly qualified nominee, and I hope for appointment. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, this item was assigned to Council Archer, who was excused, so Councilor McPhail has offered to read it into the record.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. According to Section 3.04, Powers and Duties of the City Administrator, A, he shall appoint, subject to consultation with the mayor and confirmation by the city council, all department heads provided by or under this charter. Be it ordered that the city council confirm the appointment of Kate Kern as Saco City's Assessor. I move to approve the order.
Motion's been made by Councilor McPhail. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Johnston. Any discussion? A roll call vote. Councilor Purdy?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Berman?
Yes.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Councilor McPhail?
Yes.
Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0. Congratulations to Kate Kern as the new city assessor. Up next is Item H, a one reading, a confirmation of Geraldine Mathern as Finance Director, page 24 in your packet. City Administrator Canrath?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Also very pleased to appoint Jerry Mathern as our new finance director. Jerry comes to us from the city of Biddeford, where she's served as deputy finance director for nearly the last decade. She also has about 20 years of accounting experience. Jerry has a bachelor's from Endicott College of Business Administration and a graduate certificate in accounting from USM. She is highly familiar with municipal finance operations, and I think is going to do a terrific job here for the City of Saco. Jerry does join us tonight. She's sitting here also. Thank you for being here tonight, and I hope this council will again confirm this appointment. Thank you.
Thank you, and this item is assigned to Councilor Phil Hatch.
Thank you, Mayor Doyle. According to Article 5, Section 4-14 in the City of Saco Charter, the city administrator shall appoint a finance director who will be confirmed by the city council. Be it ordered that the city council confirm the appointment of Geraldine Mathern as Finance Director. I move to approve the order.
Motion's been made by Councilor Hatch. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Johnston. Any discussion? Councilor Johnston?
Thank you. I certainly don't mean to put anybody on the spot, but I just, I think that the public is owed an explanation as far as why we're appointing a finance director when, for all intents purposes presently, we have a finance director. So if the city administrator could explain his rationale for this appointment.
City Administrator Canrath?
Sure, thank you. We have slightly reorganized the department. As you know, we added a deputy finance director this past year due to challenges with, really, recruitment is the largest one. I sat down with Guanis, and we determined probably a better route to attract a top-quality candidate and also best utilize existing staff. So current finance director, Guanis Saus, will become our Director of Budget and Fiscal Analysis, focusing mostly on that end. And then our finance director is replacing the role and the budget item really that we had for the deputy role, and that will be handling all the other finance department operations, including AR, AP, and all of the staff management. So that's, in a nutshell, what we're doing here. This is no additional cost to the city and the taxpayers. It's merely a reorg of the department, really, to better utilize our existing staff and improve efficiency of services.
Thank you. Councilor Johnston, does that answer your question?
It does. It was really for the general public, not me. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this item? Roll call vote. Councilor Purdy?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Berman?
Yes.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Councilor McPhail?
Yes.
Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0. Welcome and congratulations to Geraldine Mathern as the Saco Finance Director. That brings us to Item E, one reading, TIF funding for Saco's full water resource recovery facility upgrade, excuse me, page 25 in your packet, assigned to Councilor McPhail.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In November of 2021, Saco voters ratified the city council's August 30th, 2021 bond order entitled, "Order authorizing the City of Saco to borrow an amount not to exceed $50 million and to apply for and accept state and federal grants and funding if available to construct and equip a full water resource recovery facility upgraded located on Front Street." From the spring to fall of 2021, Saco WRRD and Economic Development staff carefully evaluated anticipated TIF revenues and eligible products from Saco's TIF districts. Following the TIF Development Program, amendment made by council and Economic Development in 2019, funding of the public sewer expansion is anticipated from Saco's TIF Development Program. This multi-departmental collaborative TIF evaluation shows that $800,000 annually for the next 25 years can be paid from the city's existing TIF program toward debt service on the full water resource recovery facility upgrade. This analysis is conservative and has been well-vetted by city staff and TIF council. Use of TIF revenue for the debt service was anticipated during review of the bond order, and the use of TIF funds for debt service was included on the sample ballot for voter Be it ordered that the Saco City Council approve the TIF funding resolution for Saco's full water resource recovery facility upgrade. I move to approve the order.
Motion's been made by Councilor McPhail. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Johnston. Any discussion on this item? Seeing no discussion, roll call vote. Councilor Purdy?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Berman?
Yes.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Councilor McPhail?
Yes.
Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0. That completes the action items, brings us to Item 10, new business. Charter amendments, as you'll see on page 28, throughout the year, the city administrator has kind of told you guys during the administrative updates to please get in any charter amendments as we would take them up after the budget. So here we are, Councilor Johnston, Councilor Purdy, and I think Councilor Gunn have put in charter amendments at this moment. So I think the first one we will walk through is from Councilor Gunn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Did you want me to walk through all three?
Yes, please.
Okay. Well, thank you, everybody. I'll try to keep my, I'll put my verbiage out there, and then I will sort of give you more of a Reader's Digest version of what I had in mind, so I won't bore the group with repetition. My first amendment was number under number one, term limits for the mayor, city councilors, and members of the school board. The mayor and city councilors shall be elected for no more than three consecutive three-year terms at a time. Following completion of three consecutive three-year terms, the incumbent mayor or counselor, or school board member, I should have put in there, shall not be eligible for the same office for a period of one three-year term. At the conclusion of one three-year term, the former incumbent shall be eligible, again, for the office under the same term limits as the prior election. So what this does, pretty much it allows anybody, any elected office holder of the three major offices, city councillor, school board, and mayor, you're allowed to basically have three three-year terms consecutively, and then we got to take a break. The idea behind this goes back, I guess the genesis of it goes back to my initial opposition when I was out there in the audience, to when this council went from two years, the council mayor went from two years elected on off-year elections, everybody was all lined up to three years staggered. And while I appreciate the idea that a longer term does give a councillor and a mayor more time to implement policy, at the time, I believe, a former mayor, Meeshard, was out there, and he quoted as saying it was a solution in search of a problem. And I only half agree with him on that because, yes, I think a longer term does do the council some benefit in terms of getting policy done. What I disagreed with was the staggering, and the reason why was, well, there's many reasons why, but I guess the crux of it is, in my judgment, if you don't have the ability to remove a majority of the council all at once, theoretical as it is, and I don't think this city has ever done that, it takes away a little something from the voter in the sense that if the voters are displeased with the council, they only have the right, under the current system, to remove two councillors at once. I like the idea of putting in a term limit because when you have a longer term and you're staggered, it invariably insulates the council from a lot of public opinion. And you have plenty of people out there that think the council is not responsive to their needs, they think the councillor is insular. Obviously, there's the old boys' club or town elders sort of model, and I thought by staggering the terms, it sort of, kind of pushes us back towards that, and it shouldn't. So I think the idea of putting in a limit, a reasonable limit of three three-year terms, and then you can run for any other office you want, I mean, it's not like you're, say if you're a councillor and you run for, you serve nine years, three three-year terms, then you can run for school board, or you can run for mayor, or vice versa. You don't have, it's, you don't have to go home for three years and just sit out. Or considering that, you know, that you're up, we're up here as generalists, we could always, you know, offer our services to any of the boards or commissions or committees, though, sort of a, the idea behind it is really to sort of spread out our knowledge and encourage more knowledge from the public in the sense that we want to encourage more people to run for office, to stand for office. And when you have people who sort of look at it as a sort of de facto lifetime appointment, and they are continuously re-elected, re-elected, I don't think that is, gives us, gives the city the dynamicism that it needs to have to be, you know, more responsive to the public. So that was my rationale behind term limits. And I said it was going to be short, so I apologize for that because... Shall I continue?
Please.
Leadership of the school board, and, okay, the mayor shall serve as the chair of the school board for the duration of their term. The school board shall elect from its membership a vice chair upon the commencement of a new term, who shall act as chair when the chair is absent and perform other such duties as delegated by the chair. Now, despite, and I appreciate the public comment earlier tonight, needless to say, it was not my intent to slip something in, or to insert politics in it. I kind of resent that. If anything, we have people in this town, including a rather active civic group that you all may have heard of, that often accuses council of backroom politics and not being transparent. Well, transparency is having an idea for something, putting it out here in new business, and then letting us debate it. Now, if we were at the first or second reading, and this is the first that these councils, these school board members, the chair have heard about it, you'd have a right, I think, to be a little miffed about it. But I put this out here to talk about it because I see an odd situation in terms of how we have our school board set up. We have a chair who does not actively chair the group, but we have a presiding officer who doesn't have the power of a chair. And I like the duality of having one chair and one administrator. We have it in the city council, and it works out beautifully. Our neighbors in Biddeford have that system. It works out fine. We, I believe, had that system prior to the RSU debacle. So my intent behind this was simply to simplify the process, to make it a little bit more easier. We don't need a chair and a vice chair as a surplus position when we have a presiding officer. We have a presiding officer who should be the chair, and then the body itself elects a vice chair to do the extra things or to preside over the body when the chair is absent. That was my intention, and I think, as I said, I think it just clarifies the system a lot for the city. And I don't believe in there's, I mean, there's, there is no, how am I going to put this? There is a division between labors, between school board and council. We all know this. The city and the school board, though, it's not, we are part of the same general apparatus. The school board, we as a council, and with the approval of the voters, fund most of the city's budget to the school board. And we, as councillors, generally stay out of school board affairs. I know I certainly have. We don't tell school board how to run their affairs, and the school board doesn't presume to tell us to do ours. So it's not injecting politics, it's so much as trying to make sure that, you know, for the bang for the buck that we get, that we have a well-run school board. That's all I was going for on that one. Like I said, I had, as far as my methods here, I had a couple of different ideas. I was thinking, you know, maybe we could just have a chair that's elected by all the voters, like the mayor has, or have a chair that is the chair again, basically remove the mayor from his presiding position and restore it to how it was. I had those couple ideas. I thought this option that I had, which was simply to sort of solidify the position we already have, would be most prudent of the three and the least disruptive. But if the council is open to other ideas, I'm certainly willing to listen to it. So that's my rationale there. And the third one I had was, here we go, office of the mayor. The mayor shall have office space if they choose to utilize it. The location of the office will be at the discretion of the city administrator. This requirement shall not take effect until the commencement of the next mayoral term in December 2023. And this just stems from an unfortunate situation that happened a little over a decade ago, and the idea that mayors always had office space to meet with constituents, available to them in city hall. Despite the fact that in the 70s, we sort of tilted the power of the city more towards the power of the city more towards a city manager-type position, where we have a, basically, a mayor who was part-time, the way, you know, any other councillor-mayor situation is, the mayor is still recognized in the, in the charter as the CEO of the city. And we also, I mean, we're an incorporated city. We're not a group of selectmen, you know, that do our elections in June with a town council. We are an incorporated city. We have a mayor for a reason. The mayor is the sort of the contact person, the go-to person for anyone in the city who doesn't know anything about politics, doesn't know anything about how a city is run, but they got a problem, they need help. If they, they come in, or if they make an appointment, I like them to be able to sit down with a mayor in an office, two chairs, and be able to hash it out. And I don't want it to be an issue of politics anymore. I don't want it to be a situation, I, I want this to happen whether or not the mayor and the city administrator get on well, as we are fortunate to have right now, or if we're in a situation where maybe there's a clash of personalities. You will see, notice in my charter amendment that I do make this office space at the discretion of the city administrator. As the city administrator does run the city on a day-to-day basis, he must decide who gets office space where, you know, the, you know, the delegation of authority, the composition of the office. If the mayor gets on with the C, with the CA, and they have a good relationship, maybe you have a nice place, though. Maybe the incumbent on the mayor do get on with the CA. If not, you'd end up in the old Bob Uker seats out in the back. But with the, but the beautiful part about this is that it solves the issue by saying, look, if the mayor wants one, he gets one. Mayor doesn't want one, he doesn't have to have one. If the mayor wants one, the CA gets to basically make the call where the office is going to be. It just sort of puts to bed the sort of lingering unwritten rule that came from an unfortunate incident about a decade ago. Like I said, there's no, like I said in my commentary ruefully, there's no explicit mention in the charter that we, as councillors, sit behind a dais with microphones. I mean, and if, why? Because it's common sense. It should be common sense that the mayor of the eighth-largest city in the city, in the state of Maine, has an office so he can meet with constituents. That was my intent. End of speech.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
City Administrator, Kenra.
Just a quick note, and thank you, Councilor Gunn, for that. I just want to note, Bill, for both of our sake, that we get along very well with this current situation. There's no issues here. I think we're going to both attest to that. We got a lunch once a week. Everything's good. So I just wanted for the public's information to know, this is not addressing a current problem between, right here. And I think, Bill, you'd agree with that. So thank you.
And I think that's why Counselor Gunn's amendment is really to put out to the voters and let the voters decide on whether their mayor should have an office in city hall and let the city administrator decide where it is, and because it won't take effect until the next mayoral term. You know, I think those are the reasons why Counselor Gunn, and him, you know, through his testimony here, kind of pointed that out. So with that, those are Counselor Gunn's amendments that he's put forward for the charter amendments. Do we want to start with those and go through those, or do we want to hear all the charter amendments and then go through them one at a time? If there's no objection, we can start with Counselor Gunn's right from the top. Term limits for mayor, city councillors, and members of the school board. So first, we'll have discussion, and then kind of some, see if there's some consensus around that discussion. Any discussion on term limits for mayor, city councillors, and members of the school board? Counselor Johnston.
Thank you. There's a lot to bite into here. But first, I will say, as, as Counselor Gunn indicated, having been the councillor that put forth the staggered terms, I will agree, I think it was ill-advised now, which is why now, when I look at charter changes, I look at it as the total picture. Because Mayor Meeshud was right. He was creating a solution for something that didn't exist. And it's had resounding impacts since the moment it occurred, one of which is just disenfranchising voters to begin with, because you are no longer, if you don't have someone to vote for, say, a ward councillor, you're not going to go vote. Well, some won't go vote. So as far as term limits, though, I think, from my perspective, and I understand everybody has different takes, you know, on this locally, state, nationally, I think it's an ill-advised policy at the local level. Reason being, I think, and again, I recognize this is coming from the four-term, nine-year councillor at this stage, but I would have said that when I ran in 2011 against a multi-termed incumbent and lost. It was on me, the next term, to come back and ultimately win that election against, again, a multi-year or multi-termed councillor. You know, I had to prove to voters at that time why I was the one that was more qualified at that given time. And I've always viewed elections as a term limit. If you're not an effective leader, you won't get re-elected. I mean, that's how I viewed it, whether it's, you know, myself voting, or even as an elected official. I recognize that I have to get out there and, and do what I have to do, particularly in, in a ward seven, where it's a transient ward. People come and go quite often. So I understand, you know, when we have these conversations, say, at the national level, because there's a lot of big money in politics and down in DC, but the local level, I think what you find, as, I think we all can attest, this is a learned skill. You do it over years to get to the point where I can honestly say, you know, not to my own horn, but I feel I'm there now. After nine years, I feel there's, I know a lot about city government. What this does is tell me at nine years, see you later, Counselor Johnston, or any other councillor that has, you know, earned their stripes, so to speak, and is an effective, you know, leader or elected official. When I came on council, I had served with three individuals that had served 20-plus years. I will say that I think, you know, personally, and I know, judging by the fact that back then it was every two years, obviously, the public agreed that they were beneficial to the stability of Saco. We don't sit here as an organization and say, well, you know, director, so-and-so, DPW, you've been here 10 years, see ya. We need to find new, you know, a new person, someone younger. So I, I think that, again, well, I understand the intent, and, you know, just like I, at the time, I understood my intent with the idea of staggered terms. But here, I think we could create a situation where you're taking institutional knowledge and just throwing it out the door and saying, well, maybe I see you in three years. In the meantime, we're stuck with someone that's, you know, relatively unqualified to do the job, and hopefully, they learn that job. But at the same time, is it necessary when ultimately a voter gets to decide that? So in effect, you're, you're actually removing, instead of, you know, encouraging, you know, voters that come out, you're in effect removing their choice. You're saying, well, I know you like this individual, but sorry, you can't vote for them. You got to pick somebody new. I don't think that's really me as a voter. I speak to this. I mean, I would have no problem. I've, I've done it at the state level, where we've had people that have been termed out. Senator Shanet, for example, we want to keep voting for him. You think they're doing an effective job, but it's, nope, sorry, you've been termed out as a state rep. And what usually ends up happening, as I've witnessed throughout my time, it just flip-flops positions anyway. So, you know, for years, we had Senator Hobbins and Senator Valentino, whether they were in a rep or a senator role, they just would flip down to the other. So you're not really getting a new person. It's just staying in that role. I don't have a problem with it, because ultimately, the public voted for them. And that's, you know, the reality. They're not disconnected from the people. They live here as elected officials. You know, DC, I get it. And I think we could have that conversation, though I do see merits to having people, you know, that have been there for a long time. I mean, for example, not to get off topic, but at the DC level, you know, would we be where we are today if it wasn't for Senator Collins's length of time down there, and where she sits in seniority? I don't believe we would be. So, you know, that's something you got to take into effect and thought. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this item? Counselor Gunn?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do appreciate Counselor Johnston's sentiments. I mean, I am sort of a convert on the issue of term limits for the simple reason that Saco is a little bit of a different sort of town than our neighbors in Bedford and South Portland, and especially Portland. I mean, those cities, you have, I mean, they have staggered, I mean, especially in Portland, I know they've staggered terms and term limits. But even without the term limits, they don't even need the term limits, because every time there's an election, there's a scrum, because people want those offices. People want to serve. In the city of Saco, city of Saco's governed well with a very good system for our size. But at the same time, like I said, I feel that there's this, as years and years pass, there's like this core of like 50 to 60 people that essentially hold all the positions, hold all the offices. I mean, I mean, we have one person who's very qualified for a, for the BSOP position, though, but, I mean, they haven't have like six, but they have six other positions. And that's not a knock on them. That's simply saying that, you know, there's no one else out there that, you know, wants to have these positions. And it trickles up to the city council. And it's just, when you're out there as a voter, as a regular citizen, and you think, you know, I got some ideas. I want to contribute. This is intimidating. I mean, it's kind of an ornate hall for the size of the city we have. You got a DS, you got a mayor, you got a councillors, and they probably figure, ah, you know, I can't possibly win an election there. It's too hard, or it's just, I shouldn't even get involved. I think a nine-year break, I think a three-year break from one office is more than reasonable to sort of encourage more citizens to stand for office, because, like I said, something that's ingrained in encourage more people to stand for office will create a more sense of ownership from our government. I mean, yes, the term limits in Augusta oftentimes deprive us of, of, of good and honorable people. But at the same time, it also made it more of a citizen legislature, though. People that would never have had a chance against a John Martin, or, you know, or George Mitchell, when they were in the, in the chamber, though, actually had a chance to stand up and run for office and actually contribute. I mean, citizen legislatures, the way, you know, the founders anticipated, the founders anticipated anybody from top on down not to make this a lifetime gig, that we come in here with our, our values and our judgment and our life experience. We, we don't run for office, we stand for office. We stand for office, we contribute for a while, and then we go home. Obviously, we don't do that with staff, because we have a professional staff that runs the city. It's a little, it's unlike at the state and the federal level, where the elected officials do set policy, can implement policy with a little bit more power. At the local level, we implement policy, and that we expect the staff to govern on our behalf. There is nothing that's going, would hurt the staff and their execution of those duties if there are more voices that are encouraged by statute on the city council.
Counselor Berman.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I don't feel strongly on this issue. I do have maybe two concerns with the term limits. One is one that Counselor Johnston already raised, and perhaps Counselor Gunn would like to address, and that's the issue of taking away voters' choice. When voters feel a councillor has served long enough, they have the option to vote them out. By implanting, placing term limits in, we actually take away the voter's option to keep a councillor they find effective. The second concern I have is, while I don't recall a council seat that went unfilled, we have, I believe, had some school board seats where we came down to write in candidates and/or were trying to find candidates at the last minute. And by removing candidates who want to run, who are effective, and who have an established time on the board, we may find it harder, not easier, to bring people onto the board.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Counselor Purdy?
I've always been on, kind of on the fence as far as term limits go. There's a, institutional knowledge is really important when it comes to any kind of legislative body. You've got folks who have served longer and know the ins and outs of how things are done. I know, I can certainly say, the first few months I was on council, I was getting used to the rules and order of business and everything along with that, too. But at the, at the same time, I think it's, new blood, new ideas, different perspectives are important as well. So everybody who's spoken about it has spoken well as to what they think, and there's a very good argument to be made either way. In the end, I think, I think the intent of this is to put it out to the citizens to vote on, and I'd be fine with letting, letting the voters make the decision as to what they think the best way to go is. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Johns, excuse me, Counselor Hatch?
Thank you, Mayor Doyle. Just wanted to weigh in on this as well. I do agree. I think that election is a term limit feature, so I'm not a big fan of imposing term limits. All of the successful organizations that I've been a party to have developed a very strong dependence on their institutional knowledge, and that has played a huge role in the success of those organizations. But those same organizations have been open-minded to new ideas and new thoughts, and I don't think those two issues are mutually exclusive. I would also be concerned about the fact that it's no secret, we have a difficult time getting candidates to run as is, and I, I have a problem with that. I hope I can encourage, continue to encourage folks to step up. But when you're eliminating, forcefully eliminating a successful municipal official by a term limit, you're running the risk of bringing, first of all, finding somebody to replace them, and having to be concerned about the, the competency that they, they bring to the table, even though they may be well-intentioned. So I'm not a big, big fan of the term limit issue.
Counselor Johnston?
Thank you. Yeah, I guess what I was going to say was, you know, from, from my experience, you know, having, having followed Saco politics from very small age, you know, all through the, the early nineties, early 2000s, there was no shortage of people willing to step up and run. I can think of just about, I know for only one of the seven terms my father served, he only once didn't have an opponent. Other times, he had multiple opponents. Same goes for just about every councillor. It's, that's where, you know, I came up with the idea of staggered terms, because I was trying to address what I thought was a problem, which was this brain drain that had occurred between my first and second term, where more than 50% of the council was overturned. So the thinking was, okay, well, the school board does it this way. Hey, maybe we should take this approach, too, and then we could spread these, this turnover out. I, I don't, I think it did have the opposite effect. I mean, I've, just went on record of saying that. If I could go back, I would have never proposed it, because, again, in my particular case, it's been four years since I, you know, I was thinking this the other day, it's been four years since I ran for office. That means it's been four years since I was consistently out there hitting the street, right? And that was coming into my mind, thinking, hey, I need to make myself available. I need to get out there, because I haven't had to do it. That's what two-year term limits did. You know, and again, I think that, at least my own experience, I, I've always, it's, I never assumed I was going to win anything, even when it was just me on the ballot. I mean, there's a member of my own family that failed to get on a ballot, because everybody assumed you're the only one on the ballot. You can get the required votes at the time. So, you know, I've always thought you've got to work for it, and that, that is your term limit. So, I mean, I guess that's my perspective. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Gunn?
Senator, I have nothing further to add, other than, like I said, my intent is to encourage, actively encourage by statute, Saco's newer residents, Saco's, you know, newer people, newer ideas, that this is not insurmountable, and they can run for office. And like I said, by encouraging new voices and new people to stand up, and by not precluding people that have been up here for a while to stand for other offices, I think Saco would be better served in terms of our policymaking. And I don't think it takes away so much as it just levels the playing field a little bit. I mean, the, I mean, state legislatures had term limits for about 30 years. If it was that much of an, there was plenty of people that were against it, though, and people that, plenty of people did decree it, though, but there's no effort to remove them, because they realize that many of their, you know, fellow legislators wouldn't be there if it wasn't for term limits, if it wasn't for that leveling the playing field. And I think here doesn't, I mean, it has, my idea has the twin exam, goals of leveling the playing field and encouraging more people to run. That's my intent. Thank you.
Just have a question. While we're on the, the subject, if the intent is to get new people, why stop at elected officials? Why not the planning board and other bodies and institute the same policy? Because many of us would, would, would say that the planning board has more authority and oversight on our daily lives than the city council or the school board. So why stop at just the elected officials? Just go throughout the entire government here? I'm not advocating for it. I'm just asking why. I'm not advocating for it, I'm just asking why.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Gunn.
I know it's not supposed to be back and forth, though, so I will just, that's why I defer to you first, but to respond to that, I mean, I gave it some thought, but at the same time, you know, council appoints those members, and they have set terms, and they're staggered, and at the same time, there are also volunteer positions, they, I mean, and they're, we all agree, the school board has the most important portfolio outside of the, at least I think we all agree, the school, probably the school board and the planning board have the two most important portfolios outside of the city council. But at the same time, I didn't want to go down that rabbit hole, considering that they're already staggered and already sort of, you know, they come up in almost random times in terms of, like, planning board and everybody else, not the school board, when those terms are up. I just figured that the ultimate policymakers, us, school board, and the mayor, and the councilors, I mean, you shake us up, and therein lies the ability to change out, you know, your boards and get new people in there. Or maybe those new members would defer to the, those board members, and council, and, you know, commissioners, and who have some knowledge. So, I guess I didn't want to upset the entire apple cart, but I figured, you know, since the top is where the buck stops, though, that's where you start.
Just for some historical numbers, looking back at the November 20, November 2nd, 2021 state referendum and municipal general election, Counselor Archer was unopposed. There were two school board members who were running against each other for an open seat. Counselor Gunn was unopposed. School Board Member Richard was unopposed, both for Ward Three. Ward Five saw two school board members running for an open vacant seat. Ward Six, Counselor McPhail was unopposed. Ward Seven, School Board Member Johnston was unopposed. Just for looking at those positions and looking back at elections, I think we can go back to the election before that, where many of the positions on council were unopposed. And so...
But they're unopposed, meaning someone didn't choose to run. It's, so what you're saying is that, or, I'm not saying you, Mr. Mayor, but what we're...
I'm just pointing out facts, I'm not saying anything.
Yeah, I understand, and again, as you were on this council when I put forth the staggering terms, that was my intent. I was disenfranchised, as a fellow counselor, that we had, you know, big swaths of turnover, and then there was this lack of institutional knowledge. I mean, as I've stated, I'm the most senior counselor up here. Far cry from the way it was when I got on, and I watched that brain drain go out the door. But you know what? Two of those that left, 20-plus-year counselors, they were defeated in the election. So, obviously, those constituents in those wards wanted change. They got the change. You know, so it's like, we can go back and look at recent elections. I agree, there's not enough public input. That's, that's the problem. My solution was staggered terms, hoping that we wouldn't have, you know, people come and go, but the reality is, we're just not touching base with people. I don't know how to go about it. I mean, it was an initiative of mine when I came on council to create the communications department. I advocated for that. I remember at the time, the city administrator, when I first ran in 2011, kind of laughed at me when, when I was discussing Facebook, you need to be out there. Oh, nobody, just kids do that. You know, I was a kid at the time. So, you know, now here we are, and that's probably the number-one way people communicate. But yet, I still feel that the public's disenfranchised in the city of Saco. I don't have a solution for it, but I don't necessarily think removing or mandating, you know, a change in removing someone's choice is the answer to getting people more engaged. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor McPhail.
Yeah, and along that line, with sending out those numbers, we don't know what the reason is. But in looking just at the most recent election, Counselor Archer, who was only a two-year, or two-term counselor, Counselor Gunn and I both coming off our first year, the school board being first year, these, we are not experienced, long-term counselors that people would not feel comfortable running against. So, is it a matter that people just aren't stepping up? But you look at that scenario, if we were on the, if, let's say it all came our time, and it happened to be that three-year consecutive term up, you potentially have five appointments, five to six appointments between the two council and the school board. Appointments take a lot of time, a lot of effort, and again, I'm not saying one way or another, I'm just throwing some additional information that I, myself, have thought. Appointments are not easy to go through. We were fortunate to have two wonderful counselors come on, but it was a long process. It's a tiring process, sometimes uncomfortable process. So, just in our race alone, you have the potential of three appointments, because all three of us would be up the same year, same term. Next year, you've got the potential of two. So, to go along with Counselor Johnston's point of with the staggering, the opportunity, oh, we could have one year, that we have seven new counselors all at one year, well, now you run into every year that you could potentially be doing. So, that's just kind of one of my cons against the amendment change. And just what everybody has just said has just kind of confirmed that to me. And again, putting those numbers out, looking at that, in one particular year, you had the potential of five or six appointments between the two boards that would have to have been done, and versus, because we would have been termed out, and we had no choice, we're done.
I guess that's assuming that nobody ran for office or put their name in, but yes, that's possible, I guess. Any further discussion on this one, on this charter amendment? So, it does not seem that there is consensus enough to push this charter amendment forward for review. I'm not seeing consensus of four counselors. Is there any objection to putting it on an agenda for council to vote on? Counselor Gunn.
Mr. Mayor, if it's in your judgment that there is no consensus, I would not, for his vanity's sake, waste the council's time. So, I consider, can consider myself a friendly objection. If the consensus isn't there, the consensus isn't there. That's why we debate these things. I'll go home and go to bed tonight, perfectly fine, but with a difference of opinion, but that's how these things work.
Thank you, Counselor Gunn. On Counselor Gunn's second amendment to the charter is the leadership of the school board. Counselor Gunn, do you want to say anything further on this?
Like I, like I had mentioned in my rebuttal, it was really, it's, my intent was simply to sort of simplify the process. I thought there was just, you don't need to have a chair and a vice chair, if the chair is not even chair, actually, presiding over the body, and presiding officer that doesn't have the ability to sort of really interact with the school board, with the school administration, if need be. I don't see it as a political thing whatsoever, if anything. It's the reason we even have the mayor, even the reason why this, why a previous council and the public voted to put the mayor in that position is to give the school board oversight from the city. Nominal, I mean, somewhat nominal, but, I mean, the mayor, you preside over the meeting. That's not an insignificant power, though. So, basically, the voters of the city said a couple of years ago, the school board, we, you know, you guys are great, though, but we want to have, you know, someone have oversight over your affairs. Now, if the school board's gotten to the point where they don't feel that they need that extra oversight, then, like I said, I was open when I was, you know, going over this and thinking about how can we simplify the process? You know, should we go back to having simply the chair, as the chair is, was previously, the presiding officer, and then have just the mayor attend, as they used to? That's only one option. Another option, which I think would be a little bit more radical, would be to have an elected school board chair, sort of analysis to the mayor. But I thought the least disruptive of the three possible ones I came up with was simply just eliminate the surplus vice chair, make the chair vice chair, which essentially what they already are at this point, and make the mayor the formal chair, such as our friends in Bitterford used, do, and we used to, once upon a time. I just think it would be, simplify the process a lot, you know, a lot easier.
Thank you. Any discussion on this item? Counselor Berman, then Counselor Johnston.
Yeah, thank you. When we, I think about the role of the chair of a counselor board, or when I even hear Counselor Gunn talk about simplifying the process, what I think about is, is the role of the chair is to facilitate the functioning of the board or council. And I've heard from several school board members tonight, and have gotten communications from several more, that they feel this change would not facilitate their work, and would not make their work easier or more clear, or provide help for their role of overseeing the superintendent. And the fact that the board that's affected does not feel this change would facilitate their work causes me some pretty serious concern.
Counselor Johnston.
Thank you. Again, with some historical knowledge on this one, which I disagree with Counselor Gunn's assumption of what the intent was, because I was the one that put forth the amendment in 2018 to make the mayor preside, and it was very clear what the intent was. We had debate with the school board about that process, which, as we heard from members tonight, they were a bit upset they haven't been included in this. I had floated a similar idea, as you had suggested, as an elected school board chair. It didn't have, you know, enough behind it with the current, or the council at the time, and that's, you know, I was certainly comfortable with just presiding. The problem that I had witnessed at the time, and it wasn't just who the chair was at that time, it had been previous chairs. You had a seated chair that was also a voting member, but yet they controlled debate, and so, as the chair, they controlled that debate. Here, at council, we have a mayor who has no voting authority. His role, per the charter, is to oversee meetings. That's what the charter states. That what we had with the school board was a chair that also voted, also would sit there and debate amongst council, or school board members, and, again, my perception, when they didn't like what they were hearing, would shut debate down. So, the thought I had in 2017, 2018 was, well, at the time, we had, again, charter required that the mayor was a liaison to the school board. The mayor sat down at the end here, really no input. It was basically, hey, if we have a question that is related to the city, we'd ask the mayor. I, my thought was, well, if he's going to be there, or she, or they, why not have that person, who is generally well-versed in running a meeting, just simply run the meeting? It was no intent to give them any other authority, it was just to run the meeting. You would still have a school board chair that would deal with the day-to-day operations with the superintendent. You know, you state that it was like this. It was like this in Saco for a very brief period of time. My father was the mayor at the time, and I can tell you that, and I remember it vividly, that there were certainly members of the school department, staff, everybody else, that did not like the, whether it was true or not, the perception of the political role of the mayor being inserted into the school department. Like I said, it was a perception, but it's, perception is, you know, what it is. So, they feel as though you're adding a political role, whether that's the intent or not. I do view this, and again, I'm not saying this is your intent or the current mayor's intent, I look at all of these as the future. It's not, you know, same with the term limits, it applies to the future. I think you have the potential to have a political power grab, depending on who that mayor may be. And so, again, as Counselor Berman said, I'm totally opposed to this. I understand there might be other communities that do it this way, including Bitterford, but I think if you look at the verbiage that exists in their charter, it's very similar to what's already existing in ours, outside of calling the mayor the chair. So, you basically preside over a meeting, and in the case of a tie, you break the tie. That's what we have currently. The idea of making the chair, I don't think it's very defined what the chair role is currently. I mean, I couldn't, I don't know where that is in a policy. School board's governed by a lot of state statute, so just the way it certainly is written presently, I don't even really know what we're doing, and I guess my concern would be, again, a future mayor could have free rein on the school board, which I don't think belongs with the school department. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Counselor Hatch.
Thank you, Mayor Doyle. I also had a chance to speak with a few folks, and listening to the discussion this evening and my own thoughts, I would not be supportive of that amendment either. I think the risk of bringing politics into the school board is not a good thing, and real or imagined, and I would not be in support of this either.
Counselor Gunn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I appreciate the sentiment in terms of politics, although every body has politics, so I don't really go far down the rabbit hole in terms of saying one body, you know, doesn't operate without politics. Everybody operates with politics, that's how, you know, we're elected bodies, that's how it works. But to Counselor Johnston's earlier point about how you, about how he, obviously, we can't go back and forth here, how he was in favor, back in the day, of having an elected chair, like I said, that's removed from the debate, you know, doesn't have a vote, and can't sort of put their thumb on a debate, I kind of like that idea. And obviously, I was open to the, like I said, when I was debating this, I felt, I landed on this one as the, I thought, as the most prudent of the three. Obviously, some pushback here, so I can respect that. But I was open also to the idea of having the chair elected as a, so you basically have seven school board members, an elected chair from the public. I would, I'm curious if I were to amend my proposed amendment, basically rewrite it, to actually have a system like that, where we go to a system where we have an elected chair, again, keeping the bodies completely independent, and actually keeping the debate without anybody who has a vote in it, you know, from interfering, if there is any appetite from the body to sort of go in that direction.
Thank you, Counselor Gunn. Any discussion on that concept?
I don't, don't hear any discussion on that topic.
No, I...
Counselor Johnston, do you want to speak?
Yeah, like as I indicated, I mean, that's something that I was favorable to four or five years ago now. I think there was, you know, components of the school board that may have been opposed to that, but me personally, I viewed it, again, you have a chair, a school board chair, elected citywide, like you do a mayor, and they oversee the school board. I, I wouldn't be opposed to that, but obviously, I'd also like to see how, you know, what the dynamics may be with the school board and the public. But me personally, sitting here today, I don't think it's a bad idea.
Any further discussion? Counselor Gunn.
Well, Mr. Mayor, if we're not on some sort of tight time limit, I'd be more than happy to sort of withdraw this amendment and rewrite it along the lines of what Counselor Johnson and I were just talking about, in terms of having, having a system where you have an elected chair from the public and seven members, and they elect a vice chair, kind of like, to make it just as simple as, it's almost as simple the way our setup is ourselves.
So, there is no timeframe that we're operating on. This is your, your opportunity as council to put in charter amendments. The only timeframe that we have to be careful of is getting those amendments through the three-meeting process, and then out to the city clerk, so she can order the ballots well ahead of the absentee ballot and early voting that happens, which is usually 60 days prior to the actual election. So, there's no timeframe, per se, because these are new, and these are something that we look at every year, and so that is the only consideration that you have to look at.
Yes, my question would then be, I guess, for the city administrator, if I were to have rewritten language at the next meeting, is it physically possible, or?
Yeah, I think we'd have to be at the next meeting. I'll confirm with the city clerk, but we are under a time constraint to get, if you want on the ballot for November, obviously, there's next June or next November, but if we're talking about this November, the timeframe is tight.
Counselor Berman.
Just a friendly suggestion, that one of the concerns I've had is the school board hasn't been given the opportunity to weigh in on these changes and proposed benefits, or lack thereof, and dialogue with the school board might be prudent before we bring it back to council.
Thank you. Counselor Gunn.
Well, put it this way, I'll prepare the language, we'll put it back on the, we can, if we put on the agenda the next time. It's out there now, so people are going to have discussions about it. It's out there now, so people are going to have discussions about it. My email is out there, so if people have any, you know, concerns about it, it's prudent on them to actually contact me and tell me what they are. I mean, I'm not going to stand at attention for just a couple of people and some hearsay when no one's actually come up to me, who's actually written the amendment and shared their concerns with me. So, I, you know, I will put my language out, and if no one doesn't like, if no one likes it, then that's that. But if it's possible, I'll, to get it in the time right frame, I'll put it out there and have it for the next meeting.
Yeah, and just again, in order to the three-meeting process, we'd have to start that at the last meeting in July to make it, we'd complete that by the end of August, and that would allow Michelle to order and print ballots.
Any further discussion on this item? It does not seem that there's consensus to bring this item forward as proposed, but you may see an alternative proposal at the next council meeting. That brings us to item three of Counselor Gunn's amendments, and that is office of the mayor. Counselor Gunn?
I think my amendment just speaks for itself. It just solves this unwritten third-rail political football that was created by a disagreement between a former city administrator and a former mayor many years ago, that has sort of percolated to this point, where it's still known in halls, halls of city hall, even though there's plenty of people here that weren't here when it happened. And I think to avoid any clash of personalities over something like that, you just have it in the charter, and basically, the city administrator says, okay, if you own an office, I will tell you where your office is going to be, and that's it. So, we don't, I'm not suggesting that the mayor have, again, like our friends in Biddeford, sort of like an ornate office, I just think it's appropriate for the mayor of the city to have a room where they can, where they don't have to, like, meet in an open space in this, in the city hall chambers, to meet with a constituent.
Thank you. Any discussion on this item? Counselor Berman and Counselor Johnston?
Yeah, sure, just simple, I think it makes sense. I agree with this one.
Thank you. Counselor Johnston?
Thank you. I think it's unnecessary. I think that, while I understand the intent and your perception of what may have occurred previously, charter mandating this just seems excessive to me. We've had a longstanding policy in the city of Socco where any one of us, including us councilors, can get office space as long as we work with the city administrator. We have what is commonly referred to as a weak mayoral system here. When you create a physical office, you are giving the outward impression that that's not the case. As a member of the public, you see the office of the mayor, you expect the mayor has more power than he really does. We haven't had an office in city hall for the mayor since J. Haley Booth back in the 1970s. We moved away from that form of government then, and unless you're suggesting we move to that form of government, I don't see the need to create space in a building that is strapped for space to be in with, from what I'm told. So, more importantly, I think that the problem that could be created is, again, it depends on that mayor. If you have a mayor that feels as though, hey, I got elected, I can do whatever I want, you now have a physical location, that person, this is my office, I'm here all the time. Well, there's an unintended, well, I think in your case, it's unintended consequence of city staff feeling as though, well, what is the role here? This is what has occurred previously, that's why it became an issue, because there wasn't a defined understanding, and so when we blame it on a city, prior city administrator, that was the city administrator adhering to the city charter, which makes it very clear about the separation. And so, as the day-to-day, we as a city have decided that we employ a city administrator to run the day-to-day operations of city hall. Can the mayor pop in, hold a meeting through the city administrator, you know, when you decide you want to have a meeting? Sure, mayors have done it, they have office hours, it's stated, you know, on the city website, or whenever they want to have a meeting. But I think mandating a requirement, to me, it sends the wrong message, not just to the public of what the role of the mayor is, but to anybody running for mayor to begin with. They feel as though that they're entitled to something that we moved away from. So, if we want to go back to that form of government, maybe that's what you're really suggesting. I don't, I don't know, I just don't think it's necessary.
Seeing no other hands, Counselor Gunn?
Counsel, thank you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Johnston's comments. Obviously, I am not suggesting that we change the system of government, I think he knows that. I also think he knows that the mayor of Portland, the mayor of Biddeford, like I said, they have office, a physical office space, and they can come in, so people can come in and state their, you know, their needs and their desires, and the mayor can pass it off to, you know, officials that are, that can address those situations. And those systems arguably have weaker, weaker mayors than we do. I mean, our charter mandates that the agenda is made in consultation with the mayor, though. I mean, there's, until Portland changes their system, which they might, there's a firewall between their city manager and their mayor, and whether it's official or not, that's pretty much how, you know, Biddeford's run too, though. So, all I'm simply suggesting is that the mayor of the city have office space available if they want it. And if they want it, then the city administrator, he's in charge of clipping that mayor's wings, if so, or her wings, if so be it, depending on where the office space is. I mean, it doesn't, like, I mean, I'm asking, all I'm asking, thinking, is a glorified closet for someone, you know, so the mayor doesn't have to, you know, go through anybody else if someone wants to come in and talk to him about an issue. I mean, the mayor is the only official in the cit, elected official in the city, it's elected by all the people. So therefore, you know, he should be the first contact if anyone has an issue with the city, or, you know, outside of, obviously, the councilors. And I just think it's appropriate for the office to have it. And it's obviously, you know, by pushing it off to the next term, no, there's, you know, I'm not doing anyone a favor here, or trying to, you know, impose my beliefs on the current city CA, it's just sort of fixing this ridiculous sort of Socco-type situation that was created by a disagreement between a city administrator and a former mayor. I made it perfectly clear that there was two faulty parties at that stake, and that's what I'm just, as I said, it's a stupid situation that should have never happened, but it did happen, and it's now become this unwritten rule. If I, if I didn't think it had to be fixed, I wouldn't have offered it this way, but I think it does.
Thank you. I just want to point out that Counselor Gunn's amendment puts it for the next mayor, not the current mayor, just so that's very clear, because I know how this works. So, Counselor Johnston?
Thank you. Yes, and again, as I've stated, I'm not looking at any of these changes having to do with anybody seated here today. And I don't think that, you know, Counselor Gunn's proposal is ill-willed in any way, and I understand what you're trying to do. My concern is the unintended outcomes of it, and that has been for many years now, how I look at all these charter changes. On the surface, you say, oh, well, we're just creating or correcting this unwritten rule. Well, again, as I stated, there's already a policy, it's in our council procedures manual, that makes any space available for any of us presently. Mandating something through charter, I have concerns, how someone interprets what that mandate truly is. We've seen this consistently, and what, unfortunately, it falls to oftentimes is an attorney's perspective, which, you know, to me, things should be very clear and precise with the city charter, and if you had asked me, there's a lot of ambiguides in it presently, and this would be another one where it says, hey, the mayor has an office. Well, what does that mean? Does that mean that the mayor gets to hang out at city hall all day and boss people around? Because depending on who that person is, they may operate that way, and we have a past history of it. So, I just think, where you have a situation currently and a policy in place where if the mayor needs an office, for the longest time, it used to be the city administrator's office, you know, my experience with it, when you needed office space, you, hey, I got a meeting with so-and-so, I need your office, okay, I'll go as the city administrator. That's, can still be in place. And if there's a conflict there, again, the council procedures manual and the charter states, you take it to council, and council determines what the outcome is. So, if there's a conflict between the mayor and the city administrator, the mayor can appeal to council and see what we want to then, as the legislative body dictate to the city administrator what his actions will be. So, I just, it seems redundant to me, and a solution to something that really isn't a problem. I don't, I don't think that the current mayor or last mayor was ever told, you know, you can't have office space. I don't, one time, I can think this has occurred. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this item? Unless there's an objection, this item you may see on an agenda in the upcoming. Hearing no objection. That brings us to Counselor Johnston's amendment. Counselor Johnson, do you want to take us through that?
Yeah, so, I mean, I think the amendment's pretty straightforward and clear. It cleans up language so as to include all other appointed positions, current or in the future. Creates the intent that all appointed positions are confirmed by council, which, again, I think is a little bit ambigui, why can't I say that word? That exists currently, based on, you know, what we're, we have for nomenclature, with a board, a commission, ad hoc, so it's just, hey, if we have appointed positions, they are confirmed by council after appointed by the mayor. It equally, you know, cleans or defines what is to happen in the event an appointment fails to be confirmed by council, ensures appointments, you know, do not go unfilled, as we currently have. So, again, I think that creates a checks and balance that's consistent with other areas of the charter, and that was really my intent here. So, I mean, yeah, thank you.
Any discussion on this item? Counsel Berman?
Thank you. I'm concerned about the second change. If a mayor's appointment fails to be confirmed by majority of council, council then proceed to fill the vacancy. I can imagine a scenario in which a mayor offers an appointment sometime less than 30 days after the date of the vacancy. If that appointment is not confirmed by council, the mayor then, in my mind, should have another 20, 10, or 5 days in order to get that position filled. In this case, council could purposefully reject an appointment by the mayor in order to gain the power to fill the vacancy themselves. The power automatically defaults to council if it's not confirmed within 30 days, even without that language. So, in my mind, that language is just simply removing the ability of a mayor to make a second appointment, or to suggest a second appointment within that 30-day window, and I view it, I guess, as a little bit unnecessary.
Yeah. Could I answer that?
One moment. Counselor Gunn?
I would concur with Counselor Berman, just on the simple part that we'd have a situation there where a mayor's appointment's voted down, and then perhaps there's nominations immediately from the floor, including perhaps maybe a candidate that the mayor wasn't big on, and truth be told, I mean, the mayor, it's, whether you want to say mayor appoints and the council confirms, or the mayor nominates and the council appoints, the effect is still the same, though. The mayor gets first crack at actually, you know, appointing somebody, and I think the 30 days gives the mayor, to Counselor Berman's point, you know, at least a second crack at it, though, that we're not just throwing up names from the council. I mean, if it gets past 30 days, yeah, we should probably be, start throwing up names from the council, though, but until then, I don't think any extra language should, or verbiage, I suppose, should preclude the mayor from having a second go at it, though, because, like I said, the appointment power is one of the few powers the mayor has, and I think it's something that should be preserved for this and any other future mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Johnston?
Thank you, yes, and I concur, I wrestled with this. I think my concern, and I didn't necessarily know how to word it, was the idea that, well, an appointment fails, and then another 30 days starts all over again, so we just consistently have open positions. So, my thought was to fill these positions, because why have them at all in the city government if they're not going to be filled? So, that was the intent, but I am certainly open to, you know, an amendment here that makes it must be filled within that 30-day. And so, like, I hear you both, and I would agree, I think it would be unfair to just say, hey, you know, seven of us are going to get together, shut down, you know, the mayor's appointment, or a mayor's appointment, and, you know, immediately fill it with whoever we wanted. But it also goes to the thing I've raised, or the issue I've raised previously, which is the council being provided with everybody that's interested in the event, the unlikely event, that an appointment doesn't occur, so that they're knowledgeable about who's actually applying to these things. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor McPhail, did you have something?
That was actually, part of my question was to Counsel Johnson, what would the process be for us to fill that vacancy? Right, we would need, whether they were re-applications of interested people, if certain counselors had somebody in mind they wanted to approach, but again, I think we would need a small timeframe to do that process.
Yeah, and again, it goes back to term limits here, where we have, I mean, we currently, I may be wrong, but last I checked, we currently have open positions, and several of them have been open for a long time. My assumption is that we just haven't been, we haven't found qualified people to fill it, but the whole intent here is to, you know, put people in these positions, because it's a disservice to the city of Socco if we don't have people filling those roles.
There are open positions, but there are not people that have signed up to fill those positions. So, unless you want the same people serving on 20 different boards, which, you know, God bless them if they're willing to do it, I think the idea is, again, what I've tried to do during my tenure is introduce new ideas and fresh voices into the fold. So, but there are current openings. So, if anyone's interested in becoming a board member on one of our boards and committees, please go to the boards and committees section of the face, excuse me, of the website, and put in your application. Counselor Gunn?
To follow up with Counselor Johnson, I mean, I think what he's intending is accomplished without the extra verbiage of the second part of this paragraph, if, you know, if you would eliminate that and keep just the other thing, we have all other appointed positions, as the statute would be written, as far as I'm concerned, the mayor gets 30 days, maybe a couple shots at it, depending on how we schedule the meetings, we get to the next meeting after 30 days, it would make, wouldn't it be, make sense, under Robert's rules, that just, you know, a counselor would ask for a point of order, saying, hey, I have an idea for this position or that position, I'd like to offer this nomination, and we would simply discuss it? Because the way I think the, our rules of business are written, especially with, like, if the mayor doesn't do it in 30 days, that already exists. So, it's just, I think, it's just incumbent upon us, if we have a name, if we think that can get four votes, that if it gets past 30 days and we know there's a vacancy, that we exercise the power that we already have.
Thank you. Any further discussion? So, it seems that there's some consensus on this item without the second langu, without the second piece, starting with if, that sentence. If the mayor, if a mayor's appointment fails to be confirmed by a majority of council, council shall then proceed to fill the vacancy.
Yeah, so, just to clarify, part of the issue I wrestled with is, well, it says, council then shall proceed to fill the vacancy, but there's no clear indication anywhere in the charter how the council goes about filling that vacancy. They don't control the agenda day-to-day, so you could have, again, a mayor that says, well, I'm just not going to, if you don't like who I'm picking, I'm just not going to fill it, and we sit there over and over with nobody in that role. And so, I was just trying to figure out a way to ensure that, you know, once the mayor has his turn at it, council moves forward with filling it. So, again, maybe the language isn't right, but I think we probably could work on that to make it clear to future councils and the public how we do that.
I think you could simply fix that in the rules and order of business, when you take those up in, every year, and you can talk about the process of if there's a, if there's an open position, how you get the names, how council gets the names through the city clerk's office, of who is, who is a potential candidate. And, I mean, that can start now, if we want to talk about changing the rules and order of business to just, again, it wouldn't, it wouldn't, you just change that to, you're giving the names, and then after 30 days, if I don't make an appointment, you guys can make an appointment from the names given. That can be accomplished in the simple fact of rules and order of business, rather than a- a charter amendment. But the other piece you can still do, and it seems like there's consensus for. But it's, again, your option, you're the counselor. Counselor Gunn.
Mr. Mayor, just to your point, though, didn't we, City, a couple of years ago, City voters passed a charter amendment that if, you have to forgive me, because I don't have the verbiage in front of me, though, doesn't it basically establish that rather than, in the old days, where if a counselor wanted something on the agenda, they'd have to actually go out and get signatures, like they're running for office now? But doesn't the language of the charter now state that any, three councilors that can, if they want something on the agenda, they can get together and basically by consensus, basically notify the city administrator that's on the agenda? I mean, does it mean by that device, you get past 30 days, and there's a couple, maybe there's a candidate out there that a couple councilors are interested in, they say the city administrator, the three of us as a body would like you to put this person on the agenda, they would come to us and then we would vote on it? I mean, because no one's ever actually tried to use that device, but it exists in the charter. I mean, it was, I know it's in the charter, because it, the whole idea was it was to prevent, to Counselor Johnston's point, a runaway mayor from just putting their, you know, stamp on debate, though. I mean, we have it already. I guess no one's ever really tried it in practice. But again, to your, to my previous point, though, that since it was simply written as, you know, shall be appointed by the city council, I would just, would have assumed as a city counselor that if I was sitting here and I knew Joe Schmo out there wanted having a position, we got past 30 days, and we didn't appoint anybody, at the next meeting, once we get through all the orders of, you know, the order of business, and before we get on to new business, I as a counselor cannot, would be able to say, point of order, I know there's still a position in the planning board that needs to be filled, I would like to therefore nominate this person and have a discussion. I would assume that would be perfectly legal as a counselor to do, just based on the verbiage that already exists in the charter. But like I said, I'm no parliamentarian, though, but I just assume that that would be, you know, I assume we'd probably have to have the lawyer here to make sure that, you know, work went through, but I think that it already exists as a possibility, just one that no counselor's ever chosen to try to exercise.
Counselor Gunn, thank you. I think you're right. I don't have the section of the charter in front of you, but there is a charter that, charter language that says if four councilors want something on an agenda, that it will be there. Now, we'll say that City Administrator Canrath will make sure that anyone's items get on to an agenda at, you know, at the appropriate time, which we've done time and time again. So I don't think there's a failure there. But again, I do think we can simplify this by changing the rules and order of business to give you guys the tools to then appoint somebody if I fail to do so. Me as the mayor. But if there was another mayor, they would, same thing. Counselor Berman, then Counselor Johnston.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think the desired outcome here is that if an appointment isn't made within 30 days, council has the opportunity to weigh in and make that appointment. I think the most efficient way to do that is just to make it automatic in a rules and order of business. At the next meeting after a 30-day vacancy, any applications, an agenda item is automatically added to fill that position. Applications and forms and statements of interest are put into the packet, so that council can read them, can weigh them, can discuss them. A point of order doesn't allow that, and if the rules and order of business make that automatic, first meeting after 30 days is passed, it just happens, and we won't have to keep track of it, it wouldn't become a political issue. So I like the charter amendment that confirms that all other appointed positions are applicable to this process. I think that's needed and useful. I think after the 30 days passed from the date of vacancy, the city councils will proceed to fill the vacancy, covers the fact that it becomes council's business after 30 days, and what's missing is the procedure for how that's done. And I think a rules and order of business amendment to just make it automatic would cover that.
Thank you. Counselor Johnston.
Thank you. Yeah, so I think, again, to Counselor Gunn's point, yes, I certainly was aware of that, and that was my thinking, but the change to the charter was to simplify it in the charter so it was understood, because of course, I could go that route, but then there's not a guarantee that you get four councilors. Maybe they have a change of heart. It was, let's just streamline it and make it clear. And I think Counselor Berman did a pretty good job summarizing that right now. The only issue I had with the council procedures manual is there's, there's nothing that really holds it concrete. Charter is concrete. That's technically a law. You know, violation of charter is, I don't know, 500 bucks, I believe, but the point is, is that, you know, that's the citizenry's laws. And so my intent was, this is how, you know, we're going to move forward in the event this happens, and that's why I thought it belonged in charter and not simple council procedures manual, because as we know, those can change with council, too. So I don't know exactly, you know, how we clean it up, so it makes it clear that, you know, council, a council will move forward if, in the event, the mayor does not fill that position within the 30-day period. And again, I wanted to make sure it was that 30-day period, not a recycling of another 30 days after a council votes it down, and we just go on forever that way. Because the way I read it or read it at the time, that appeared to be an opportunity for a mayor to do if he just decided, well, you know, I won't appoint anybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Hatch.
Thank you, Mayor Doyle. I would be supportive of keeping the language in the charter, because I agree with Counselor Johnson about procedures versus charter. I think it'd be more clear to have it mandated at that point, but I do, I am sensitive to working into the language a second chance opportunity for the mayor. So I, off the top of my head, I can't come up with language, but I think I would be in favor of keeping the language modified to provide for a second chance appointment by the mayor, not just grabbing it by the council immediately. Thank you.
So it seems like there's consensus for this to come back to council, so if that is the case, and that seems to be, please have any amendments that you would like to discuss sent in to City Administrator Canrath for the next meeting, so that we can get them printed and put into the packet. So if you have any amendments on this or any other charter item that has been put forward, or if you have any charter items that we didn't cover, please put them forward. Counselor Johnston, do you have any others? Thank you. Counselor Purdy, you had put one in, but it did not make it into the packet. Are you withdrawing that?
Yes.
Okay. That concludes the new business charter amendments, and that brings us to item 11, administrative updates. City Administrator Canrath.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of quick items. The municipal Association of Legislative Policy Committee is looking for members, actually due to lack of interest, they're looking for a write-in at this point. The nominee must be a municipal-appointed or elected official. If anyone is interested, please let me know. The meetings are held in Augusta. The time of commitment is approximately 10 to 20 hours per month during legislative session. Council agenda preview, our next meeting is going to be on July 25th. We'll discuss, again, charter amendments. ADU sprinklers will be in final hearing. The CZA for 66 North will be in final hearing. Buxton Road Sewer Line budget amendment will be in final reading. We'll have a recognition of the TA baseball team, and we'll most likely have an executive session. Sort of on the horizon, a couple other issues, the sewer panel array issue, we're currently under emergency moratorium, that will be coming back, and also short-term rentals policy. Just a quick update, our fire, collective bargaining agreement, we're making good progress on that, and we'll have some further updates from the council in the near future, and then obviously a final contract for presentation and approval. Lastly, my next CA open office hours will be held on July 26th from 2:00 to 4:00 here on the Second Ford City Hall, and of course, all Saco residents and local business owners are welcome and encouraged to attend. Thank you.
Thank you, City Administrator Canrath. Any questions? Seeing no questions, that brings us into item 12, council discussion and comment. Any council discussion and comment this evening? Counsel, I don't know if you were all informed, but it was put out in the press today, so I don't think I'm putting any information out there that's incorrect, but Jennifer Day, one of our planning board members, has been chosen to lead Saco Main Street moving forward. So thank you to Jennifer Day for putting in, thank you for all the candidates putting in, and congratulations to Jennifer, and we wish her well on, you know, continuing the good work that Rob Biggs had done as executive director. So with that, if there's no other council discussion in common, there's no executive session this night, so that brings us to item 14. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Counselor Hatch, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Berman. Motion's been made and seconded. We're going to do a hand vote to adjourn the meeting. So if everyone's, raise your hand if you're in favor of adjourning the meeting, it's unanimous, we're moving forward. Six-zero. Thank you very much, everyone. Have a wonderful evening.